Tonight, I'd like to call to order the Salem-Kaiser School Board. All board members are present except for Director Placy. We're going to start a work session and turn it over to Kristy.
Sorry, I was commenting on Jesse Schur.
I like to support our schools.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna pick up where we left off from our last meeting. And I wanted to start with the attributes of that executive board. And I put this in your packet again. I know you got it in email. But it's in your packet at your table. And as I recall, these were the priorities you designated. And so I put those as KPS priorities. And I just wanted to kinda go around the room with the board and say, does this make sense? Do you wanna make any plans about how you do kinda have some additional conversations? We've got to a place and then we ran out of time. So, yeah, first question is, are these the right priorities? Do you have any thoughts on how we make these priorities reality?
Or do I start?
And Jesse, you get to start.
I think these are great priorities to have. I mean, number one, having relationships built on trust and mutual respect. That's awesome. Engage in open and honest communication with one another. Do not have hidden agendas or issues. Share and accept constructive criticism without making it personal. I think those are all good ones to have. And I think if we did them, maybe it would make us a more effective board, so. As far as how to do it, I would say, a lot of these are relationship-based, it seems like. And so it's just communicating with each other and building trust and relationships.
I think they're fine, but I think a lot of them are covered already in the board. Policies about how we will deal with each other and treat each other. So, I don't have a problem with any of them.
I agree. My call.
Ooh, dear. Have you had to face my [inaudible]?
Take that back.
It's all [inaudible] again, not say that.
Wait a minute. Have a relationship built on trust and mutual respect.
Right there.
We made it, guys. This is the peak.
Yeah. She's here. I think some of them are pretty darn hard to measure, but I agree that it's a pretty comprehensive list.
Wanna make sure we use the microphones because of CCTV.
They hear that?
I don't think we have to push the button.
No, they're hot.
You just gotta get 'em a little closer. That's a button.
Kathy, you wanna repeat it? I don't think it got recorded.
You don't think what?
I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, I thought some of these things were goals that are pretty hard to measure. And I think we all realize that. But altogether, it's a pretty comprehensive list, I thought.
I think these are great. It is going to require ongoing connection and discussing and seeking each other's feedback as we start fleshing out. Because if this has to continue, this has to require constant feedback. And I'd like to, because, you know, I'm new here to this board, so I would like to, from time to time, I would be asking some questions if I don't understand, and I'll speak up. And that doesn't mean that, you know, it's anything criticism or anything, that's the way I think. And so, each of us will have our own style. We want to get to know each other's style of how we ask for clarification. I would, along with this, I think this will also allow us all to feel safe to voice what we think and then ask for opinion. So by asking that permission-based approach, I feel there'll be one way to roll this out. And then, once we find this is helpful among us, it'll also allow us to build trust with the stakeholders, which is the community who we report to. So I think this is a great start. And what we do amongst us is the way we are going to connect with our community, and the community will trust us. I think it is the way I see it. Speaking up, seeking permission from each other, soliciting feedback from each other of what they think of this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with everything I've heard.
Do you have any concrete, any concrete steps you want to take?
As a board talking about speaking up, I think one question I would like to ask or suggest is, if we take a look at our policy, or if there is anything else that comes to our mind, and likewise Superintendent Perry, if you notice something, or if your directors notice something, or teachers note something, then we should kinda create the atmosphere where they feel safe to speak up, saying, hey, this policy doesn't work. Or tell me, what's the logical outcome of this policy? Why do we have this policy? Some of the policy may be historical legacy-based, which may not be totally pertinent to today, because I was seeing the date when these policies were signed. Some of them are really, it probably served a very important purpose at some stage. But the question is, is it serving now? Do we kinda focus on the policy as the end? Or is it really serving the people, our children and family and students? Thank you.
I'd like to make it a priority that we get through the board governance, BSL results and EL like we normally do in our annual retreat work session. Do you have a comment?
I didn't understand. Well, Paul starts.
I was, I think under 2D on the agenda tonight, that we would add, under our work session topic, check in for 15, 20 minutes at the work session in January, that we would just do a follow-up to say, okay, how are we doing with this? If we're spending all this time on this, how are we doing? What's going on? If things are great, it's gonna be two minutes, we can go home. Otherwise, we can do some work then.
So you'd just add that to?
I would just add it to whatever the work session topic that, for January.
That's a great idea. As far as like actual actions we could take, of course, there's the one I mentioned earlier where we could get together outside of board stuff. I think another good step would be us just attending school things. Because, you know, like we have the groundbreakings, the McKay's Opening Field Day, all those fun community events. I mean, those are ones where we're there as board members, but we're also there, and we can kinda talk to each other and get to know each other better, I think, just by doing our job and showing up.
I'll see you at the theater.
You there?
Okay, are you, do you wanna move on to the board governance policies then?
I think so. We really, I think those are our priorities, getting through the work that we should've done last month.
So, here's what I thought we would do. I'd ask that you kinda look at what we talked about last time, look at our priorities, and then look at our board governance policies. So if you, maybe we just go around the room, and we could either go policy by policy, or you could, we could just have each person state where they'd like, maybe to propose some changes. Does it?
I'd like to go policy by policy.
Okay.
And just to make sure, on some of them, they have a lot of content. Maybe we read through it to make sure everybody's understanding the same thing. Doesn't mean we have to read every single word in here, but there's just some where there's a lot of, a lot of detail.
Okay. Do you wanna guide us through that, then?
Sure.
Just to start with, number one, BG1 board govern, or governance commitment.
Okay, so BG1 governance commitment. I'm just gonna read it quickly and see if there's any changes or any clarification. The board is committed to the success of all students, and student success will not be predicted nor predetermined by characteristics such as, but not limited to, race, national origin, religion, disability, geographic location, economic circumstances, mobility, native language, sexual orientation, gender identity, or any, or level of proficiency upon entering our schools. The board, supporting the work of the staff, the welfare of the students, and the interests of the community, holds itself accountable to the community by ensuring that all action is consistent with the law and the board policies. In the fulfillment of the charge, the board is committed to rigorous continual improvement of its capacity to govern effectively through policy by defining its concerns in terms of values and its vision in terms of expectations. The board is committed to adopting and applying an equity lens to all decisions on the board. Are there any comments? Kathy?
Paul, is that what you were, he's not there.
He's right there.
Hi, Paul.
Behind ya.
Part of this, we're on BG1, and it said that in terms of values and its visions, in terms of expectations. And I wondered if we could call your meeting, would come into this, really about the same thing.
My what?
Your meeting in January, when you wanted to go back and look at things.
I was thinking more that we would, I was thinking more we would talk about BG4, BG3, potentially.
In January?
Yeah.
Yeah.
BG6, if we need to, BG7. Those are the ones I was thinking we might wanna review.
I've reviewed them, but I did think this called for a look back to see if we'd been effective on what we just talked about.
And that's what I was saying.
So are you suggesting, Kathy, that you add language to this policy?
We could, and it would fall right along with what we're doing.
So in fulfillment of the charge, the board is committed to rigorous continual improvement in its capacity to govern, and will monitor that on a biannual basis.
Sure.
Sure.
Or as necessary, would go as well.
Maybe a minimum of biannual, and more if necessary.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
Yeah.
As needed, could be five years from now.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Okay. Any other comments on BG1? Going to BG2? I'm not gonna read all this one. It's long. Do we have any comments on equity lens? Paul?
I do. Linda Myers, on the first bullet, the fourth line, what do the words "and" and "power" mean?
When historically underserved students match the outcomes of students in the dominant culture, when underserved groups increase in capacity and power.
Yes.
I think, I think the language probably came out of our initial consideration of the power dynamic that just exists when, if you have a community-based engagement meeting or any sort of committee, and if nine out of the 10 people in the room are white, not only does the white, does the non-white person in the room not have representation, they also likely don't have the power differential within the room. And I think the intent is to give weight and credence to a voice, even if it is only one voice in a room, that voice is representative of a significant population of our students. Would be my sense as why we landed on wanting to not only increase their capacity and leadership and their capacity to contribute to decision-making and to offer feedback, but to also give them an opportunity to increase in their power and influence, might be an interchangeable word.
I prefer the word "voice" that you used, if we were to change "power" to "voice."
It's, I, it's not quite enough. I like influence, capacity and influence. A voice can be discounted, and power can't be discounted.
But I know, then give me a specific example of power in this exam. I'm not, I'm not seeing a specific example where influencing capacity leads to an increase in power, how those, how this sentence works.
So...
But I need a specific, please.
Okay, so let's think about, we have families from the Latino community showing up at our board meetings.
We do.
And they have a voice, because they come to the podium. And I would argue that they have probably increased in their capacity to a certain extent, in that they now understand how board works, how to come and present their opinions and their thoughts. But I don't think that they have yet increased in their power or leverage.
And what would that look like, then, Linda?
Well, have we responded specifically to any of their concerns in an actionable format?
I thought that's what we kept getting told that we were. That's why I'm having a problem.
So, now you give me an example of...
The, I understood that, like, for example, the dress code?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't, we were told, we were already responding to it before they ever came forward.
Hmm, so I wanna be careful, 'cause I don't think the dress code was brought to the forefront of the board by a minority group.
Okay.
So mixed group.
So let me give an example of where we have worked to help have power, is the Boundary Review Task Force. Because not only did we increase capacity, increase knowledge and skills, we actually placed a member in the power position of the co-chair. We also helped, had a few community members have power of voice within the, within the process.
But having been at those meetings, I also saw that power discounted and not included. So I'm not sure why the difference between voice and power, yet it isn't changing in my head.
I do like the word "influence" more over "power." I think that the word "power" institutes more of an aggressive form of action, and influence is more collaborative in requesting people to approach a conversation and participate in the process, which is really what I'm after as a community member, is that collaboration piece. And I'm fine with influence, but when people try to assert their power over me as an individual in any community, I immediately come, become defensive, and I think that's a standard.
What about influence and access? I could live with influence.
[inaudible].
You guys are agreeing twice.
This time I agreed with her. Influence.
I think influence retains the intent. I think it just carries a little more leverage than just voice. It's...
I wouldn't go there.
It seems possible.
I'd leave it at I accept influence.
Yeah.
There were two words, though, that came up, and they were influence, they were, what two?
So Paul Decapola suggested potentially access, although I think the reference to access, well...
Sorry.
I'm not gonna lie, I don't wanna, I don't really mind the word "power" being there, just because we understand the context and what we're shooting for there. If we want influ, I mean, I don't mind either way if we've changed, as long as we understand what we mean by it, I'm okay with it either way.
So I'm happy to be transparent, say that the word, this is up, came up because I asked it to in a conversation that I have had both with Marty and Paul, in reviewing this and other areas of this book. I think some of the words aren't transparent, and we don't understand. And if I don't understand, being a part of the conversation that others, who I'm asking to review these, to be accountable to, may not understand. And I think the word "power" has a bigger context versus "influence," which is why it's here.
So let me suggest a couple things. One is, any changes we recommend, you should bring through a first and second reading process before the board, so it gives public the chance to have input into it. But I wonder, with the equity lens specifically, if it might not be a bad idea to seek some input, and from our communities of color who actually do have capacity, to help us guide any changes to the document.
May I kind of pay in? This policy is too cumbersome. And I was trying my head to understand what exactly we are trying to communicate. I really want this language to be such that even a fifth grader or a fourth grade level should be able to really read and understand. Because you're really dealing with, if you really want people to participate, and really want to view it from the point of equity, by equity, I like to see, not because of a person of color or whatever it is, it is just that we want the same outcome, but a calibrated resource and response in order to reach that outcome. I'm just putting it in simple terms, right? So, so think in that term. So it has to be something very simple. It has to be something that even a fifth or sixth grader level of education should be able to understand and comprehend. So I tried my best during this trip to kind of understand, okay, what can I do? So I ended up reviewing this National Academy of Press, the latest guidelines on monitoring educational equity. I'll be happy to share this document. This is their most recent one in 2019, and said, you know, this topic of, how do we operationalize and explain to parents what exactly it means? There are 16 different indicators to say when you meet educational equity. And then, start asking ourselves, if this is the outcome we want to see, what kind of response, what kind of resources, what kind of policy adjustment we need to make for different groups? When we start saying historically and things like that, it makes little, I'm kinda scratching my head. There are 80 different communities in this community. Some of them have not lived their history in this community. See, it's like when you start using this example, white, black, okay, that is a historical wound our country went through, I'm not disagreeing. But if you really look at the proportion of folks, they have had generational wound from other parts of the world, and we bring our own trauma into this, and there is a hyper-segregation of not just English-language learners or people who are immigrants, poverty, and all the other social indicators are there. So there are so much more. So I'm thinking, if we have to have a policy like this, A, we need to make sure the definition is such simple, one liner, not more than that, that even a fifth, it's like a bumper-sticker definition, which anybody like fifth-grade education should be able to read. I should be able to translate in at least 80 to 100 different languages in which people can comprehend. Then start asking what kind of calibrated resources we should be allocating, what kind of monitoring we should have, all the way from preschool till they enter college. I really want to see what happens. The first year GPA, how many of them have to take remedial classes? And then start sorting out, differentiating, is there a, we can start saying how much the poverty has contributed, how much of socioeconomic status contributes, how much of the segregation of what I call hyper-segregation, or double J for D, triple J for D, or poverty plus thing? And then start designing the thing. So, it is a lot of nice language, it just reads well, but I can't understand.
Yeah, I do agree that, oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, so what I hear you saying, then, is your recommendation is, we review this in its entirety, we rewrite it to make it more simplified and easier to understand, and maybe get rid of maybe half the words, if not more, in this document.
Ninety percent of the words, I'll get rid of it. I will adopt this 16 indicators, which really measures, this is standards, 2019 National Academy of Press, I'll send this soon. That's why, I didn't have time to send it, so I brought it along with me, I was trying to charge my APAN. And which really talks about two things. A, equity in terms of outcome, B, equity in terms of resource allocation. I can throw all the resource I want, but if I can't demonstrate an outcome, then I have to go back to the drawing board and say, am I really doing a service, or am I kinda simply making me feel good rather than the kids really mean?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. I think that we should definitely take a look at this on a separate day, and just really focus in on it with people at the table who are part of our underserved community, so that way, everybody feels like they have a voice at the table.
Daniel?
What?
Do you agree, do you agree with that approach?
Well, I'm, I definitely wanna dive into it, whether it's today or another day is not, is here nor there to me. There's, I have a lot of questions about this particular policy, and I think it deserves some attention.
It might deserve its own session.
Yeah, and I'd really like to see the community at that session, to have that open dialogue with them.
Paul?
I just wanted to change one word.
And now it might be another work session.
I have several notes.
Can I just throw out into the room that I would suggest, if you have a deep interest in really revising the policy and really digging into some of the concepts that are present in this document, that we probably need to step back and do some additional training for you as a board?
Yeah.
And so that we have some common agreements on definitions. What do we believe about equity? What do we believe about white privilege? What do we believe about bias there? We are not a group sitting around this table, and the board right now is not a group that demographically represents the students that show up in our schools. And so I would want to ensure that you, as a seven-member board, and us as staff supporting you, just have provided us an opportunity to make sure that we have some common understandings and agreements upon what we mean when we even say equity.
Yeah, and when we do that, I think it's important that we're all together in the same room when we do that, just because the last one was awesome. I mean, I think it was great. It was just, with us, I think it's important for us to be all in the same rooms, that way we can have an understanding of what each of us believes in regards to that.
And, you know, this, this really isn't written for us, it's written for the community, telling us what are them, what we stand for. And if they're not able to understand it, then we're not doing them a service. Kathy?
So I've gotta take the other side of this, and I'll refer to when we just came out with the new dress code. We were very specific. And I think when we're writing things that could become legal in nature and could cause us legal complaints or a legal standing that we don't want, I think it has to be that way. And I, we could change it so it's maybe more understandable, or we can make it our responsibility to introduce it that way. But to just make it that general, I think is asking for challenges and challenges when everything happens. Well, was that really something that we shouldn't have done, or anything in that nature? So...
I'd just like to address what Linda said. I agree that we should take a step back. Because since I've been on the board, which is only a few weeks, there's been limited access for me to learn those definitions, and I think there's a fair amount of assumption on behalf of staff, because I have a job that engages the district, and I'm a parent that I might know some of this information. And personally, I'm frustrated that we're already to the point of talking about this just as an individual, without really asking for my participation as an individual and what my learning level is. That question hasn't ever come to me. Maybe I should've been the one saying, I don't get it. But I kinda felt like that was present before, and it's just unfortunate that we're, you know, three meetings in, if that's what we're at, and we're just now saying, let's go back and teach these folks about the definitions that we use as a district.
I can actually go along with that. So, the first year I started, I brought up the smart aleck idea of putting the definitions all along. So everybody in the audience knew what we were talking about. So I knew what we were talking about. And we decided, no, that'd be far too many, they'd still be going around like this. But I can understand what you're saying. It is difficult. They have a lot of acronyms, a lot of, all kinds of things that aren't just initially understood.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Are you referring directly to stuff related to equity and inclusion, and that type of language and the way we talk about that? Or are you talking about terms that we use to describe what we do in general?
It's, it's about the terms specifically. So when I went through just this section of the board governance, there's several words in here that even if you Google them, which I did, to see if it had more than one definition, it came up with more than one definition. And when I compare that to our website, which is where I go to try to find the information that's communicated to the public, it's not, those aren't necessarily identified in a definition, to be able to track where the thinking is to execute the policy.
Okay. Craig, let me ask myself, I'm sorry. You know, my challenge is, how do I take this and go to a family, say Sikh family, who might have escaped political persecution in Punjab and showed up here, and they're hiding, they're scared? And take this and say, this is what I want you to keep track, your child who's entering kindergarten will end up, or this is what is available, what exactly I need to do? Or when I reached out to the Latino families coalition, they, they brought up a lot of very important topics. But my question is, if it is a little bit simpler, so that I can take that and say, this is how you keep track, and if this meets this, then you're on the right track. If not, you let us know where we are missing, what kind of resource we are failing. Otherwise, we'll be focusing on small little things. The chalkboard is not there in the classroom, that is thing. But that doesn't speak of the outcome, it only speaks of a process. And I really want the parents, Sikh parents or the Latino parents, their child's outcome should be same as my child's outcome, as any one of us' outcome. That, to me, is a level of equity, so you can break the generational cycle of poverty, hardship. Because we have all an opportunity to interrupt that story from repeating generation after generation. This is the bigger value of equity lens, the way I read and understand. Really tried my best, to be honest, I read the 260 and odd page, which, not... To be honest, I read the two hundred and sixty and odd page, not able to email it to you. I read every line, trying to ask myself, because this is a new term, but I understand what it is. It's a new term, but doesn't mean I didn't experience it, right? My father-in-law was a tribal, the first time he came out with zero education. And so we were able to, I'm thinking from my personal experience. So this is a very important policy. Let's not throw it out. This is probably the most important policy. Seventeen thousand kids is more than the population of Pendleton is sitting there, who are kind of looking at us. And we need to find a way to explain to them, saying, look, your kid's outcome should be same as my kid's outcome, as any one of our kids' outcome. That is how I understand. Now, what does it take? If you have to sit extra, learn intuition classes, or keep the lights on, you know, get somebody to bus you to study extra, whatever it takes, we'll get the same outcome. Because it's a national interest, in my opinion. It's not just the kids' interest, it's a national interest. So I really think we need to, I'm not saying the concept is wrong. Please, Linda, I don't want you to misunderstand. The concept is great, but we need to make it such that we can take this, give it to me in a bumper sticker form, I'll go and.
How about, how about we change the word power to influence for now, and then we readdress this later, because I think this is going to be a longer conversation than we have time for today.
I just wonder if in here, it talks about a board orientation, and what that has possibly looked like in the past, and whether or not it's time to really have a board orientation, because we have a new board. I know that there's a work session, and we received a lot of information last time, which was really great information, and it really helped kind of guide my thought process as I was reading through this recently. And it did change my perspective on certain things from when I had read it originally, which is helpful. But going back to the things that we had talked about before, when we're trying to work together, we're trying to understand as a group to make best decisions on behalf of the community, which is being new as a group. Maybe we should have that orientation.
No, I definitely agree with Danielle. I think that, I mean, one, this is a good chance for us to do number seven here, which is engage in open, honest communication with one another about like, what do we know and not know? What do we, what do we think and not think about certain policies? Because I think that's really important. One thing that we didn't do this year, that we did when we first became board members, was OSBA does their camp during the summer, and they go over a lot of this stuff, because that someone wants targeted towards newer board members. And so that's, we did that when we first joined, from what I remember. And that helped me a ton. It's just this year, it didn't happen. And it's not your fault, it just didn't happen. So I think that, I think that Danielle's right. I think that'd be a good thing for us to go over, and just so that way when we're having conversations at board meetings, we can, when we're talking about a certain word, we can know, be very clear about what we're talking about.
So we did experience that right in this room, and I still remember the boxes and the three kids, and trying to explain what equity is versus equality. I mean, it was over and over again, and I think maybe we went through that too fast this year, and just assumed everybody understood.
So I'm just gonna kind of do a, we will do whatever you need us to do as a board. This policy is your policy. Previous boards have done this policy. We're happy to slow down. We could spend the whole year working on our policy book. There'll be some more, you know, decisions that have to come along the way. So we're happy to do whatever you need us to do as a board. So whatever that is, if we say, let's spend two days together and do more orientation, whatever that is. But I just need, I feel like it's a little bit, I'm not sure what you're asking.
So is there be okay that we change the one word for now, and then we readdress this later?
Marty? I would say, instead of changing one word, why don't we just table this to a different date, whole thing?
Okay.
And we can even simplify it using the same, because this is the heart of our organization.
Okay.
I think we need to leave it, and then discuss changing it when we have that conversation.
Not rather than tinkering with it.
Okay, so let's move on then. We will come back to this later. So BG three, Board Job Descriptions. Is there any, I am not going to start reading all these. I thought, I decided that was a dumb idea. I don't want to read all these. Do we have any comments or questions or potential changes from anybody?
I did.
Kathy?
And in reading this through, I thought it was important we clarify this before, I think it's House Bill thirty-three ten comes along, because there are parts of this. Each school board member shall reside in the zone from which he or she is elected, but shall be elected at large. The school board shall adjust the boundaries of the zone as necessary to apportion population, so that zones are as nearly equal in population as is feasible. And I think that goes against the new state law that is trying to attack our district. So I think it's important that we make sure that we have a policy in that direction.
And at the last meeting, I did ask Christie to put together a committee to take a look at the data, how other districts actually elect their school board people, and the data, you know, from all different angles, and come back to us with some recommendations on whether we continue to do it this way, because there's no state law that we do it this way.
Not at this moment, but it is.
No, I mean, the way it is right now, written in here, there's no state law that we do it that way. Other districts I know do it differently. So have some people come back and tell us how they do theirs and make recommendations.
The second paragraph of the second, the second sentence of the second paragraph is essentially a quote from the statute.
Okay.
So if you're going to be elected in this manner, elected at large, then the statute says this is what you should do with respect to adjusting boundaries. Now, there's other options.
Right. And that's what we want to look at. So to see, do we want to continue electing at large? Do we want to, do we need to adjust boundaries and continue electing at large? Do we want to start electing only by zone? I know in a district, a friend of mine was running in, they had a couple zones, and then they had some basically at-large board members. So there's lots of different ways to do it. So we're just looking from, some advice from the community members, and some data, looking at some data to determine if this is the way we should continue, or is there another option that would be more equitable? Jesse?
I just wanted to ask, when is the last time that we looked at adjusting the boundaries of the zones? Because it says here, the school board shall adjust the boundaries of the zones as necessary to apportion population, so that the zones are nearly equal in population, then blah, blah, blah.
Is it the last census, maybe? When, does anybody know when it was done last?
Hasn't been done since I've been here, so.
The last census was ten years ago. Does anybody know? Hey, Mike.
Yeah, when was the last time we looked at the population of zones?
I don't know. Heidi's been here longer than Mike, maybe Heidi knows. Heidi doesn't know either.
And can we request that we do that? Or can we just do that?
Can we just?
Do what?
Look at the population of each zone, and then?
Again, look at it. And that's what the committee will do, is look at all the different particular parameters, and all the different options, and maybe make some recommendations to the board. Okay? And you probably don't need to wait for the census, because does it have to do with population, or with electors? I mean, you know, voters? I'm not sure. Danielle?
I don't have anything on the first, second paragraph. I want to talk about number three.
Okay, we'll get there.
Okay.
Any more on that? Okay. Number three.
Number three is providing regular opportunities for public input around the board's policies. So I'm curious what this means, how it happens, and when it happens.
My sense is it's public comment in the boardroom. Other than if you go out, so when we did boundary change process, we went out to town hall meetings and things like that. So it depends on what you're asking for. For policies, it happens in the boardroom.
And when the board adopts new policies or amends existing policies, it takes action, and there's a public comment on action items.
So when we go to adopt, any changes we make to our policies is when they will have an agenda item opportunity to comment? Is that what you're saying?
Well, just like any, anything on an agenda, they have, the public has the opportunity to comment, but they're not generally directed for, in a special process, for commenting on a board policy. It's the same for all board actions.
Other, Paul? No?
I have.
Ateya?
The way I read this, I think of it in a little bit broader sense. Other than the three-minute when they come and comment on things, I look at it in a different way, because there's a lot of diverse population will never come here. So we have to have different approaches of going to different communities and seek their input, because when you meet them in a safe place where they can share safely, you're going to see a real good picture of what works, what doesn't work. I saw this in action, not just, recently we went on outreach, a listening session with Latino Coalition for Latino. They specifically wanted to know if we could have a policy where parents and family members can be more inclusive of parents and family members, so that they can also start participating. To me, that's a very good idea. That's the way we should have. We should, our schools should be open. So sometimes you may have to have different approaches to seek public input. Sometimes in Chinese family, we go to their home, and they all had an opinion, trust me. But you'll never see a single Chinese family sitting in this boardroom and coming in the work session. Same thing with Marshallis, I've not seen anybody here. Same thing with Sikh community, I've not seen too many show up here. So I really think, the way I see it, we have to have, the openness should be, can be both ways, because there is nothing that says they have to come here to give a comment on the policy. We need to have more than one approach, whether digitally, or soliciting their input, or going on simple listening session. Even worst comes worst, have a board meeting in different community, where all it says is four of us show up and someplace is a board meeting.
CCTV.
And CCTV.
Right.
Sorry.
So we're talking about the board job description, and one thing I want to do this year is visit some different schools, try to attend some PTC meetings, just to tell, you know, tell them, this is what we do, or at least this is what we do right now, right? And so that they at least understand. And of course, that might lead to some opportunities for input. But one thing I would like to add is, in the third paragraph, after legal requirements, the board will operate within all legal requirements. Maybe like in parentheses, add some of the kind of one or two-word things that we deal with as a board that may not be generally known, like if an employee or a student is appealing, maybe a termination, a student is appealing an expulsion, and all those kind of little things that might come to us to make a decision. Although they're not really little things, but, you know, one or two words. So somebody could look at that and know, oh, they deal with this, 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 and this, instead of just legal requirements, or some big general category. People don't know what that really means.
I do think this section is referring to your own legal requirements about how you meet, and meeting in public, I think. But if it isn't, we can add those.
Well, maybe we can add it somewhere where people can see in our job description what it is we make decisions on, in just a few words. Danielle?
I wanted to go back to number three.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. So providing regular opportunities for public input, do we only seek public input in person? Or is there another format available to the community if they wanted to submit it to the district, and it'd be read by somebody, the chair or so forth, to enter into the record?
They can do it in writing. They can provide written comment.
And, okay. And then is our board agenda and packet translated into Spanish?
Our agenda is translated into Spanish. The entire packet is not.
Okay. And my last question for that is, how is the agenda communicated to the public? And when, I know that there's a twenty-four hour notice, so do we wait until Monday to get it out to the public?
We do it every Friday. When you get it, it's just a few minutes ahead of getting it out to the public, when you get your final board packet.
Okay, thank you.
So could we add something that kind of just lists some little bullet points, or, you know, a couple words?
On legal requirements?
Maybe, maybe it's not the legal requirements, as you said, since it has to do with actual meetings, but the things that we make decisions on, in general, like two words each item?
Or do you think maybe, oh, sorry, do you think that could maybe be one of the letters under developing? No, that wouldn't be under policies.
We can see where it goes, but I think it's good information, especially for our new people to know, oh, we do this, and oh, we do that. Or somebody that's not a board member to know the things that we do.
Then I have one comment that relates to this policy and all the others. I do think we should make our policies gender neutral. So second paragraph, instead of he or she, we'd want to insert their, from which they are elected, and we should do that across all of our policies.
That's fine.
Great.
Anything else on BG three, before we move on? None? Okay. BG four, Board Members' Code of Conduct. And some of this, of course, tied into our trust, information sharing, and everything we talked about already. Is there any comments? We'll wait for you last. Danielle?
So in the first sentence, the board commits itself and its members to ethical, businesslike, and lawful conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum when acting as board members. I'd like to add the word integrity in there, with integrity.
I like that word.
I think that would fit.
Remember reading it. Anything else on BG four? BG five?
I'm not quite there with BG four, if you will. Read my own notes. One A, members will annually disclose their involvements with other organizations, with vendors, or any associations which might be, might be, or might reasonably be seen as being a conflict. Are we doing that?
Have we been doing that, Paul?
I don't recall seeing everyone's disclosure.
I don't, yeah, I think most of us don't have one.
I don't believe the board has done that in my recent memory.
Did, like Chuck Lee do that every year, when, because he was part of Mountain West?
Board members typically will announce when they have a potential or actual conflict under the ethics laws, when they refrain from voting. And Director Green did that. Others have, Director Lee has done that, others have done that. I think this is, there is a separate policy, board policy, on conflicts of interest under the government ethics law. That's, yes, that's the next one. But that's not really what this is talking about. This is talking about when you have an association with another business or an entity, organization, maybe you're a board member of another nonprofit, that you let your fellow board members know that you are, that you wear two hats. And that it, these are rarely actual or potential conflicts, because you don't get any financial gain by being a board member of the Inspire Foundation, or the Salem Chamber, whatever it might be. But the idea is to let your fellow board members know, here's what I'm involved in at a leadership level. And so when these issues come up with SCAF, or Boys and Girls Club, that you've at least let folks know that you're on that board. And even though you don't have to announce it's an actual or potential conflict, because it doesn't involve financial gain, that your fiduciary duty is to this board primarily. And so you'll have to figure out how you're going to deal with those kinds of issues, and that's what this speaks to.
Chris, I have a question, Christie. Hang on just a second to clarify. So, you know, we have the sheet of board assignments, and so on there, I have some board assignments that really aren't board assignments, like I'm part of Sur or Marion County areas. So is that really maybe the more appropriate place to put those other boards or things you may represent? Or should we be doing this verbally once a year? I mean, I don't think anything that I personally do has any conflict with the school board, but sometimes, you know, when we were looking at Auburn, I'm on the Marion County Parks Commission, and I'm on the school board, and I know some things about property that the other side might not have known, you know, and.
Well, one way to do this is for, to have all board members completely disclose. Well, one way to do this is, is for, to have all board members typically disclose on a, on a list, here's the organizations I'm involved with, and here's how I'm involved. So, and give those to the district administration so that we can alert you if there's an issue that come, that's going to come up for the board that we at least need to give you a heads up about.
Yeah.
Because then you'll need to decide if you're, even if you don't have a financial conflict, if you are, if you are a board member of an organization that is seeking to have a contract with the district, even though it's not a financial conflict, you should disclose it and refrain from voting about, on it if you feel like you're so close to the issue. So, maybe a way to do this is to change the language here that says, "Board members will annually, annually disclose in writing by such and such a date." Let us say, by August 31st before school starts.
Except for not now because that's like this weekend.
Well.
Battle off right now.
Pick a date that works. July 1st for a new board member is probably too soon, but waiting too long into the school year is maybe too late.
Kathy was first, then Paul.
So, I think we didn't solve that real easy if we contact the City of Salem. I mean, they have their disclosure form, and it's filled out by every employee, and it's filled out yearly. And I think it helps us, I don't know what everybody does, I wouldn't recognize it if they were doing something which benefiting unfairly that group because I don't know what the group is. So, this is just, I think, quick standard bookkeeping.
Yeah, I agree with Kathy.
Paul?
I just have a curiosity, are you talking about leadership roles or just because I'm part of the North Salem IBIC Street Block Party Planning Committee?
We want to know.
Especially that group.
Booyah!
You have a barbecue. Planning parties without us, Paul.
Yeah, I mean, is that what you're after? Are you after like actual?
Well, I'm not after, I'm not after anything.
Well, I guess that's my question back to.
The board is after this.
Right, so what is the board after?
This is your policy, so you can, you can describe, I think, how, how deep into an organization, your expectation is for your fellow board members. I mean, my way of thinking is if you, if you have a financial interest in an organization that's likely to do business with the school district, make sure you do that. If you are in a leadership position, or as an employee of an organization that is likely to do business with the district, or to take an adverse position on an issue, you ought to write that down, too.
So, probably not the neighborhood association. You're safe.
It might well be.
This is, this is an important thing. There's some other school board in our state, out of the 180 school board, face this issue. So, there's a Facebook group I am part of, so they really brought up this, how are we handling it? So, this is an important issue, we need to have a one page. Like in Salem Hospital, you are, just like what you said, we have one page, you say, I have no conflict of interest, no pharmaceutical industry is taking care of my kids, whatever it is. So, we should have it, every year we should fill it out. The question I have in addition to this, because if, if we can hold a very high ethical standard, then we can expect the same accountability in the entire organization. So, the other question I'm asking is, if a parent has to volunteer in a school, we ask them to go through a background check. A teacher has to do, we are asking them to do a background check. A principal or educator has to do, we are doing. Are we going, going to hold ourselves in the same standard? Because we are ultimately, we have to conduct ourselves. So, I really think this would be a real good standard out of the 180 districts in our state. It's not much sending your driver's license or one-page form, just like, then it gives us the ability to go into a school and listen to per- family, or maybe volunteer, or stand and sell tickets, or whatever is required, right? So, that, can that be part of the policy?
Yeah.
That we also, as board members, we demonstrate the same level.
So, you're suggesting a background check and?
Same standard what parents and volunteers and teachers go through, right?
No.
Danielle?
Those are different, but.
I mean, I'm actually surprised that it's even coming, I mean, I'm background checked because I'm a volunteer in the, in the schools, but I just assumed that you looked into that, and if I wasn't, I would be background checked. So, my bad to assume, but I definitely think board members should be held to the same standard of, of that.
If I can ask a teacher, I can ask myself. It's simpler than, not rocket science.
And to be fair, I think the background check should be a part of the process when we are approving the election results. So, like.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
That is too much, yeah, that will get into a lot of.
So, I mean. So, you could have somebody with.
I've passed all my background checks for the record, but what happens if you had a board member that did not?
Which is why I suggested that.
Why, what would you do about that?
I don't know, Paul, what would we do?
Well, I, I think this, we're, we're going down a road with background checks, and I think we have, what do we want to try to avoid? Because we do background checks on adults that have unsupervised access to students. Now, board members might have their own students, and you might volunteer in a classroom, but rarely would parent volunteers have unsupervised access to students. So, what will it mean if you do a background check on a board member and the results come back that they can't have unsupervised access with children? Does that disqualify them as a board member? Not, not under Oregon law, it wouldn't. So, I mean, before we put these processes in place, we need to think, what's the, why are we doing this? And what are we going to do with a, a background check that would disqualify you for one thing but not for being a board member?
And when I'm in a school, I'm, I'm hanging with a teacher, I'm not, you know, wandering around anyway, so.
I would like to think of it this way. Suppose a dispute around custody of the child or issues around that come up, and let's say the grievance reaches to the board level, then I, as a board member, have to weigh in, whether it's a partial or a whole board hearing. So, I need to have the ethical standard to weigh in on some issue, or do I recuse myself saying my background check didn't work out well, so I can't stand there? What if four out of seven board members have background checked that is kind of sketchy? Then there is no quorum. So, we don't want to land ourselves in a situation where the board fails to perform its function just because each of us decided to recuse because our own background check may not.
I'd like to get back to our disclosure, our annual disclosure, and maybe take a look at City of Salem's document that Kathy was talking about, to see if it's relevant. And if not, maybe in the next week or two, just send an email to Kristy with anything.
Or something.
Anything you might, might want to share as, as things you're a part of, groups you're a part of. Kathy?
Well, really, it doesn't have to be all that difficult, you know? Somebody can say, well, I have a potential interest here, and I don't think my actions have anything to do with that, and you can ask that the board listen to that if they choose and they vote on whether they'll accept your vote or not. I mean, it's not like you're pitched out forever at what that topic is, it just can be quite simple.
Right, and that's only if the particular, something comes up that would, maybe you'd have a conflict of interest in, that's come up before, and, and we've decided, or Paul's helped us decide whether or not there's a real conflict of interest or not. So, it is more, I guess we can just list any associations, and it doesn't even have to, just can go, go somewhere. So, somebody knows that board member XYZ might have a potential conflict of interest with something coming up, and then that would warrant a discussion to determine if there was one or not.
It just protects the person as well as the district, you know? They have made some effort.
I think it would be helpful when those lists come forward, if Paul or someone in his office takes a look at them and just gives us a heads up in advance that we might need to take a deeper look at some of the areas that we might need to pay some attention to. I'm happy to say I'm, this is the only board I'm on right now, so if there's that, but.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. I wouldn't know otherwise.
Well, I'd have to do that, but as the administration puts together the, you know, board meeting materials, this is typically where people get surprised because you might have an association, you, you might have a brother who owns a plumbing company who's going to get awarded a contract, you don't even know about it.
Yeah.
It comes to the, into the consent agenda for board approval, which normally, if a small contract, you're not doing that. You vote on it, and then later someone says, isn't he your brother? And you don't even know that the contract was in front of you. And so, in, in a way, the, it's, as we build the agenda for these kinds of items, it helps, it will help us identify when to alert you that something you're involved with is going to come to the boardroom.
Move on to BG five, Board Member Conflicts of Interest.
I have one more problem.
Oh, sorry.
I had you stretch it out, but I had trouble with he, in quoting that, it says, "Except for participation in board deliberation about whether reasonable interpretation of the board policy." No, I'm sorry, I'm one off, two off. It's B, as in boy.
Okay.
And it's, "Press or other entities must recognize the same limitation and the inability of any board member to speak for the board except to repeat explicitly stated board decisions." And that's big to me because when I was on the city chariots, we had one board member after every meeting would be straight to the legislature, and she would be saying what she wanted as if the board had given her a release to say that, a verbal release, I don't want any more written thing. But be aware that I don't, it's not up to individual board members, that's overreaching, I think, to do that.
Right, it's not, it's not up to individual board members to represent the board, and when I've been on the radio, I've always started it with, these, this is my personal opinion, I'm representing me, not as a school board director, but I am not speaking for the board in, in whole. Any questions on that? Okay. Is that it, Kathy, for that one?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
BG five, Board Member Conflict of Interest. We kind of already talked about that, is there any changes that need to be in here?
And onward.
All right. Got one free one. BG?
Six.
Yeah, continuation of that one, isn't it? BG six, Process for Addressing Board Member Violations. Let's not have any, how about that? Any comments or any changes that are recommended for this? Is this a comment, Paul?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. You're bidding when your hands are up.
I put down.
$500, you bid $500.
Sorry.
No comments? Okay, let's move on then to BG seven, Governing Style. I know there's questions on this one. Kathy, do you have any questions on BG seven?
No, I do.
Paul?
Oh, I do on the back.
Yeah, you.
Oh, yeah.
You do, okay. Why don't you go first, Paul?
Okay. I just want to emphasize it's the board, not the superintendent, who will be responsible for excellence in governing, and that's something I think we need to take rather seriously. And again, if we look at the items under number one, these are the pieces that Kristy was passing out about on the chart that we were looking at.
Right.
Board member behaviors, focus on issues, not personalities, respect decisions of the full board, exercise honesty, criticize privately, praise publicly, make every reasonable effort to protect the integrity and promote a positive image of the district, and one another, never embarrass each other or the district. Also, I think it's important that we always come prepared for meetings, and we respect the roles of the individuals that we have. Number four, board's major policy focus will be on the intended long-term benefits for students, not on the administrative or programmatic means of attaining these benefits. In other words, we need to be involved with how we get things done, not the details of what we want, just lay it out there.
Jesse, you had something?
Yeah, I just thought, reading just the first sentence here, which is, "The board will govern with an emphasis on end results for students other, rather than on interpersonal issues of the board." I think a lot of times it's easy for boards to get into our own beliefs rather than focusing on student, end results for students. And so, I was just wondering what you guys' thoughts were on the difference between focusing on the end results for students versus interpersonal issues of the board.
I think we're all here for the end result of students, so.
I don't understand your question.
Okay, so my question would be, I just, one, I wanted to point that out, and then, two, also just ask you guys what your, what your thoughts are on, what could be, for example, an interpersonal issue of the board, of a board member, rather than focusing on the end goal of students? Like, for, one good example would be, for example, I'm involved with Junior Achievement, right? Like, I'm trying to, I like, I believe in financial literacy for kids. But if I was using that and advocating for that in the boardroom instead of focusing on board stuff, then that would be my own interpersonal issue as opposed to focusing on kids. And so, my question was, what your guys' views or thoughts are on other examples of interpersonal issues of the board as opposed to focusing on the end result of students? And if you don't have any, then that's fine.
No, I think, you know, if you have two board members that are not getting along so well, so much that it overflows into the boardroom, that can have a negative effect. But then we come back to what we think is important, you know, the getting along and being respectful and everything. So, I, I think this is okay the way it's written.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, Director, Chamber Committee or Board. I did have one on the back of the page that I just found. So, I'm on four A.
BG seven?
Uh, yes, and I think it's an important one. Four A specifically says, "Accordingly, members will not assume responsibility for resolving operational problems or complaints, or give personal direction to any part of the operational organization." And I, I am big on that because I think that is not our job. So, I think we need to work on that some.
Paul?
I agree with Kathy almost.
That's a first timer, Paul.
I would say, I think, I think that is about the first time. And seven, I have a question on that. The only, the only place I see four is not that not being a fair statement, is involving the superintendent. Because as our direct employee, then that is where we would get involved, and then we would leave it up to her to fix whatever, but she's the one that it goes to first. And so, I think that's the one exception to that rule. The other 5,000 employees, no.
Yeah.
One employee, yes. So, that's the only place. And then on number seven, I think we already agreed to a biannual or semiannual, so we should probably insert the words, or the letters SEMI in there, annual.
So, yeah, on number four, you would be emailing Kristy and please CC me, so I'm just knowing what's going on. And when it makes sense, because sometimes it won't, it would be really nice to know, maybe not necessarily the outcome, but that it was resolved, the parent was, was, you know, worked with, you know? So, that's kind of like, I'm wondering about this, did ever, did it happen, did it get taken care of? And I just kind of worry about it in my own mind, and it'd just be nice to know, yes, that person was reached, I had like a really nice conversation with Eric, and unfortunately, the parent didn't reach out to him, but I understood exactly what they were doing and why, and, and I felt good about that particular issue and how it was handled. Not that I'm saying about how it's handled, but that it was handled. So, I don't have to worry about it anymore, it's nowhere near my problem. And it didn't get forgotten somewhere, right? And end up in somebody's spam folder. Danielle?
So, in follow-up, I'll start at four, and then we'll go back to the first page. So, in follow-up, I'll start at four and then we'll go back to the first page. I just want to say thanks to Alice because she recently assisted me in some communication with a parent that had reached out to me, which seems to be a trend. I think parents reach out to board members because they get to know us, we're in the community. And it is important for me to know that there was, there's closure of some kind. And I, she really did a great job of helping me know what the closure was. Of course, I saw that person like a few hours later in the community and he was able to tell me the follow-up within the district and how helpful it was. But I am curious because I don't really, I haven't seen kind of the process or outline as to what your hopes are for us to be able to interact with you and then what that follow-up would look like when we're pushing things on to you, when we hear them in the community.
So, I'll tell you, we do our best to follow back up with you, but our most important priority is resolving an issue for parents. So, the more, the longer, the sooner school gets started, the more those sorts of things amp up. And I won't guarantee that we'll, I'll be great about always letting you know how things will resolve, especially when we get to the spring. We know that starting about April 15th, the escalation of complaints that we get and are handling are from this to, I mean, I wake up with 10 every morning in my inbox.
And so, the kids, kids may not graduate that were.
No, it's just the pressures of the end of school.
Yeah.
It's just the pressures. So, if you could do your best to pass them on to me, sometimes I'm just very quickly spending 30 minutes of my day passing on complaints to the people that can handle them, let alone any complaints that come from you. So, I'd like to be able to get back to you, no guarantees, especially when we're in the April timeframe. If people, if somebody keeps peppering you, I'd want you to say, hey, have you done anything? And I can check. But it, it does get to be too much to have too many people to follow back up with.
Alice is a wonderful conduit for that. So, I've always found that very helpful.
We actually really try to do our best to get back to you on these, but I'm telling you, when it's April, it, it is all hands on deck. There are not enough of us to handle the complaints of, that come about just as a result of it being the end of the school year, the pressures, the graduations, the, it's, it's just the timing here.
So, I'm just curious, do, does your, when you pass it on, let's say you pass it on to Linda. And she resolved the issue, does she say anything to you? Or, I mean, I know this is your individual thing. I'm just trying to understand, does she come to you or email you that it's been done? Or you just assume she's going to take care of it?
I'm assuming she's taking care of it, but we have a tracking system internally to know, so that if I get a follow-up, there's a way I can look into it to see.
So, in those very busy times, if something we really want to know about, would we maybe know that you're going to send it to Linda? And would we go through you then? Or would we go to Linda, who we knew you passed it off? Trying to not give you 500 questions that you sent 499 to Linda and she's really the one I need.
Yeah. But remember, I've sent 499 to her. So, she's actually the one. It's almost easier to keep them through me.
Okay.
Not to say you can't ever do an assistant superintendent or Mike or any of that, but it is, on those parent issues especially, it's almost easier to keep it to me because I'm resolving very few of them, but actually, they're resolving hundreds of them.
I'm just trying to make, you know, the flow the easiest.
Yeah.
Marty, can I, just a quick question? If every, Superintendent Perry, if every year you're having this escalation of complaints
since April, over the years, are there any trends to these complaints that you would like to come and share with us, saying, okay, some of them pertains to, my dog ran away. Some of them pertains to, my kid isn't waking up and going to school, or whatever it is? So, that at some stage, it starts giving us a picture of, are there any trends or things? So, that as a board, we can start asking, okay, what do we do? Or in our community relationship, what can we do when we meet parents and saying, these are the five things that's going to come up?
So, to kind of mitigate the problem?
Correct. Rather than every year you're going through this stressful time. I don't want you to.
I think this is really a normal school time because everyone, it's been, this is how it's been for 30 years of my life. So, it's, April is the time that everyone is tired, they, the sun comes out, it might be a hot month, what, the pressures of graduation. It just happens to be the time that things escalate in classrooms.
I, I get it. Trust me, I get it. In my field of work also, I deal with a lot of crisis, but I really don't want you to suffer so much to run a school. That's my worry about you. So, is.
I'm not suffering.
All right. If there is a trend to these complaints, it would be really, it also can tell us a little bit about what is going on. Is there any way to mitigate it, go kind of front end so that it doesn't reach? Because some of those complaints can keep escalating to the point of district's reputation in the community, or the community's faith in our district. See, that's what I'm really looking at.
Good points. And we need to break at, at 6:45 to tear down the room, so I want to keep moving along. Danielle, did you have something else on this one?
I do. Yeah, but I just wanted to follow up really quick with Christie to say that, because I, I really take the accountability for myself to the people that are reaching out to me seriously, that I will likely, when I send forward the information at CC them, let them know that if they haven't heard back in a way that's efficient, that they could reach back out to me. Because I, I understand that there's a process, but I want them to understand that I want them to know that they're important to me too, and that they're getting what they need. Not to say that you wouldn't do it, because I'm sure you would, but just to close that gap so that way, if I don't hear back from you, I know I put it out there for them. And then, to question one, on the front page, in the first paragraph under the bullet points, where it says, focus on strategic leadership. That goes to a definition that I had mentioned. If you Google it sometime in your spare time, and you will see that there are very, a lot of different variations of that out there. And I'd like to spend some time as a board, learning about what that means for us and how we are going to apply that as a board in our role.
That's all. Any more comments? Move on to BG eight. So, uh, moving on to BG nine, but then kind of maybe coming back to BG eight, for chair's role. Well, it does have participate in the orientation of new members, and we've kind of identified that, I'm not really sure what that orientation is myself, other than, you know, what I went to, the boot camp. And there was something else in here about looking at how we worked as a board over the last year that probably needs to be in our, some sort of board governance policy and, and maybe that's not, maybe that ties in with reviewing the ELs and everything, and are we doing a good job of that? Or maybe it's something separate to, you know, how did we function over the last year as a board? Did we make any strides in?
Yeah, I think there's a place in here, I think, I thought there was a place in here in one of the policies.
Did I miss it?
Around self-evaluation.
Okay. And so, do we need a?
I can't remember where.
Director Kylo just mentioned it in the biannual.
Yeah.
And BG seven.
Yeah.
Okay, so, would that kind of cover, that probably covers everything, everything that we do?
The board will monitor its process and performance on a semi-annual basis.
So, I just wonder on BG eight, where it says in the third paragraph, in addition to annually, as an agenda item during the school board's summer planning meeting, which is normally held in July or August, the board chair will facilitate a conversation among board members to determine if the school board's performance during the previous year was in compliance with the following policies. And it lists out all the BGs. And I think there's a difference between a work session and a retreat. And the work session is something, in my opinion, and understanding is really kind of guided by the district and their staff. And a retreat is something that we, as a board, guide ourselves through with the direction of leadership to deter. And I think you have to look back on that at the end of each year to make sure that we're successful in the policies and, and goals that we're setting for ourself. And when I watched back the last six months, I didn't see that, that really happening on the board and then.
I think it ever has while I've been on the board.
Okay. So, I just wonder, when is the opportunity for the board to host that retreat and really dive into what these policies and goals look like for ourselves to make sure that we are, you know, making progress as a board?
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, June, maybe not on election years, but June potentially might be a good time, even though I know everyone's exhausted because school just ended. I'm not saying that should be the exact month, but just as a suggestion, because the chair changes over in July, and it would be helpful for the knowledgeable person who's led us for that last year to engage and lead that conversation for us and with us.
That is the hard part, because the chair changes in, in July and you start over.
Right.
Yeah. But no, I think it's a, I think it's a great thing to bring up. But the only question is if it's the entire board in, in the retreat, as far as like CCTV goes and public.
We did a retreat at the Broadway, what, two years ago?
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
It could be something like that. So, kind of informal, but yet it's open to the public because we're a public entity.
Can I, in a retreat like this, it serves as, it's more like a strategic retreat, having a facilitator, to kind of, an objective facilitator, to kind of guide through the discussion and sift through, so that we can really start thinking in terms of five to 15 years' trajectory. And then, start saying, doesn't matter what the board changes, but at least it'll give us a vision. Because that would be really helpful to articulate the vision, because I still kind of, partly I'm troubled because we are so caught up in the process rather than the vision part of it.
I think Christie was trying to get something like that for us set up, but they weren't available. So, maybe we can look into that.
Yeah, well, and I think it's up to you, I think back to Danielle's point, it often, and this is not, this is not unusual to this board, this has been my history with boards, so I'll say it's not you. But owning your work, yourself as the board, and not having the superintendent own your work for you is really, I think, critical to a high-functioning board. What I am doing right now, as you're talking, is I'm walking away with my to-do list, which I am your employee, but then, when I come back, it sometimes doesn't meet what you're thinking, because I'm just trying to guess what some people are thinking.
You're not us.
And I'm not you. So, that would, the, a way for you to figure out how to own your work, just like your learning and what you want to learn, I think is really critical. And then, I can help facilitate, I can help get people to facilitate, but owning it first, I think it would be really helpful and healthy.
Well, then, Chair Hyatt, I'd just like to ask you personally to look into this and schedule a retreat and get us a facilitator.
Certainly.
Are you asking for it for next June? Or are you asking for it sooner?
I would ask for it sooner.
I think sooner.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
We don't want to get into bad habits, Superintendent Perry. We want somebody to think before we get into habits.
Yeah. I think better sooner than later. So, like, if we did one end of September, beginning of October?
Um, yeah, I think it'd be good to do one and then do the, the BSLs, the results policies and everything, in that kind of an environment, maybe is what we need to be doing. Okay. All right. Anything on BG nine, other than the things I already said about that one, that I don't really know what the orientation is, other than boot camp, even though I'm chair?
Yeah, I just have one question on BG nine for, for the five and six that we had just talked about. When, it says participate in the orientation of new board members, is there already a document within the district that outlines what that looks like?
There is none.
Okay. So, maybe we need to sit down and have a conversation in some capacity, maybe it's at that retreat, to talk about with experienced board members and new board members who are super fresh and unaware, what that would be helpful for.
So, let's talk about that in our retreat.
And then, for number six, when it says coordinate the evaluation process for the superintendent, is there a definition of what that coordination looks like?
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah. It usually comes in about January, after we've given the student achievement reports, and it's tied to both the executive limitations and results. There are some places for it to be back, but the way it's written right now in your policy and in my contract is it's tied to those two things.
Okay. And is your contract public somewhere?
Yeah.
Is it on our website?
Not on the website.
It's probably in a packet on the website, but we could get you a copy.
Okay. That would be helpful.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all.
On 10, any comments on agenda planning? Hang on a second, I'm not looking at it, because I have to make my note. Any comments, questions? Danielle?
I'm not going to apologize, because this is good information. To accomplish its stated objectives, the board will follow an annual agenda. What's that? I know what an agenda is, but is there, is this laid out somewhere to where the public can see what it looks like, so I can know what that looks like? I'm, I don't, I like to plan ahead and have a good idea of what I'm trying to do. And I haven't been able to find that annual agenda anywhere.
One of the things I had on our list today is, you've asked for a lot of information.
I know.
And I wondered what our work session topic should be, which we usually decide and then lay those out. So, that's part of that annual agenda. I do executive limitation report every time. We have a certain time, we generally plug in the academic achievement, but then, it's up to you to also set kind of what you want your work session priorities to be, or what sort of planning presentations you want. And we haven't done that yet.
Thank you.
BG 11, board operations. Any comments? Quickly, I'm moving on. Oh, Paul?
The only comment was, is it, if you read number eight, it takes four votes to move anything forward. So, if there's only five of us here, it takes four to vote affirmatively before it moves on.
BG 12, I have a comment on this, but maybe we can't do it here. This was a problem I was very frustrated with the last two years during budget committee time. You know, let's say, we really need five more nurses and it's, we had that situation and it was, it's very important. Me, as a board member, I have no idea where that money should come from. I don't know how the money's used in detail. What is the wisest solution? You know, maybe it's a compromise of less and we take some bigger or there. But it would, I would never know. I never am going to know, and probably neither is any other board member. And I would like to see the process changed to a list of the top items that the, or that the budget committee decides on are the top ones. And then, we discuss, is there any way to fund them or not, from the people who understand the details of the funding? But maybe we, does this have to be done when we set up the budget committee? Or do we, as a school board, decide this is how we're going to do it?
For this?
Yes.
This is your, your policy as a board member? This is your policy?
But we don't, I don't think we talk in this policy.
Oh, about that practice.
About that particular process that we do, that I find it impossible. I mean, you know, we don't really want to make changes if we don't really need to. I understand that. But I find it almost impossible to do it if Kathleen Harder hadn't been there and come up with the, well, because I, I had said I wanted to get some more nurses after hearing some more compelling testimony. The question was, well, where do you want to take it from? I don't know. And Kathleen Harder had the idea of take it from X, Y, Z, and so, we were able to get those positions. So, I just don't think where it comes from should fall on us directly. And we can look at it, if we have three priorities, and you can tell us where that would have to come from, and we can decide that doesn't make sense to do that because of the ramifications or that it does. But does that go into our description here? Because we're not really even talking about how, how we deal with changes to the budget in this document at all.
Yeah, I think that's been the disagreed upon procedures that the budget committee has agreed on. So, you could, whoever's the budget committee chair and vice chair could.
Is the one that will have to change this.
That could help bring it forward as a change.
Okay. Well, I'll do that to whoever's the chair and vice chair. Any more comments on that from anybody on?
I do have a comment.
Yes.
I would propose that we tabled it for a, a different meeting, kind of dwell into it, saying what you're saying in terms of the budget committee, what are, I mean, some of it is historical, but is it really meeting the needs of?
it is historical, but is it really meeting the needs of Superintendent Perry and her ability to design programs to meet the future?
We, I'm sorry, excuse me. We decided it's not for us to decide that, it will be the whole budget committee. So that's when we will want to talk about it. So we'll elect a chair and a vice chair for our budget committee.
Yeah, but as a board, don't we need to have some kind of direction for which these dollars and cents should be allocated?
We, we do not currently have any direction in here on how we make changes to the budget.
That's precisely what I'm trying to say. This particular policy, what if we can look at it in a little bit more detail so that whatever the priorities or direction which we can come up with, which our Superintendent Perry wants to kind of design so that she has a little bit of more flexibility of achieving that to align with whatever priority we're coming rather than budget committee having some direction and the board having some direction and superintendent having some other directions.
Well, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So are you asking or stating that you'd like to see the board potentially make priorities that the superintendent looks into to determine funding and then it comes to the budget committee for review and approval?
Yes.
Okay. So how does that work? So let's say that the, there's a theme in the community that we're hearing about as board members and it comes to the boardroom and we're discussing it.
Like interpreters for-
Yes.
Our Spanish-speaking community.
Yes, we know that that is a priority. And how, how do you go about taking what you're hearing either from us as a board or the community in general and transitioning that into effective outcomes and resources? I don't know if I'm asking that right.
So, yeah, that's it.
Two minutes or less because we're almost out of time.
Okay. And I have, yeah. So what I do is, first of all, we start with kind of what our roll-up costs are and so we, and we'll start that in October and November. So we begin that budget preparation spot. And then we have a variety of places we listen, there's a variety of outcomes we look at and we just try to collect themes. Generally, if there's more money, that's a time that you can really look at what your priorities are. Some of the big priorities have been around behavioral learning, the creation of a Department of Behavioral Learning, and some of that came from what our educators were telling us were happening in classrooms. So we've, we do that listening and assessment and then try to roll it into the budget creation process. A lot of years, it's either if you have priorities, you have to cut to meet them. So then you have to decide, is this cut over here worth this priority? What are the unintended consequences of that?
And who's involved in the conversation of what the priority of cutting and giving is?
Mostly, mostly cabinet. We don't ever come out with a what's your priority list. We do listening through our teacher groups and classified groups and all of that.
Okay. Okay.
And things we've heard in the boardroom. One reoccurring theme we heard in the boardroom was rather our increasing of our diabetic students and that was coming into the boardroom. And so I listened and went, okay, what do, what do I know about what's happening out there? Is what they're saying true? What does the data tell me? Yeah, they're right. We need to reprioritize some school-based health assistance.
Okay.
Move on to 13. Oh, sorry, Paul, do you have something? 13?
Yeah, I have one on 13.
My question is for Mike regarding number four, we received the certification from the various groups letting us know that the property is in fact still being used for the same thing as required by number four. And since those are supposed to come used by September 1st and that's rapidly approaching, I thought maybe you have an idea of something arrived yet or if we're focusing some.
I haven't received any as of this date and I think the intent was that it's the city that actually grants the exception, right? And, and as a board, you either concur or not.
No. I believe what it says that that's how they initially get it established.
Right. But after that, in number four, they're supposed to give us an annual report telling us that the property is still being used appropriately. That would be in lines, one, two, three, four, five, six, starting in line six, annually by September 1st and then going down four more lines. It talks about how you're supposed to be getting those. That was, when we put this policy together, that was one of the conditions we put in there.
Right.
And so I was just curious if we'd received any or if we need to be taking steps to rescind-
Seek, seek out what, to be sure that the properties are used as.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, no, we haven't received any at this point.
That was my question. So thank you.
Jesse?
So on this BG 13, it says, this board policy provides an avenue for nonprofit low-income housing, family housing providers, and that's what the focus on this is on. And a lot of the requests that we've gotten were not low-income housing, they were just regular old housing, Joe Schmo's trying to make some cash. And so you don't have to agree with my language, but-
Revitalization districts or something.
Yeah, that's what-
That's not the right word.
That's what they call it.
Urban renewal.
Yeah. And so, but anyways, so the wording in here says it's for nonprofit, low-income family housing, and that's not what we've been approving recently.
Though, right, but those have been exceptions that this policy did not cover. Those were standalone, on their own.
All right, this is our policy though. This is just our policy.
So we're still allowed to vote on those even though it's not in our policy?
Yes, we vote even on these, don't we? We vote on all of them.
Initially.
Well, it says for us to vote on these, it doesn't say for us to vote on those.
Right, those are the exception that we've been allowed, that the board has been allowing.
So shouldn't that be in here that we can give ourselves that exception?
No, they can bring something to us and we can just vote for it.
Well, there has to be a restriction on our power, like for example, if they came to us and, like if I came to you, I'm like, hey, I want you guys to give me a million dollars from you to build an apartment complex downtown, right? And so if I come to you with that, then you could just say, oh, well, it's another exception just like the other exceptions.
Well, you have broad statutory authority in chapter 332 about, for example, property. So you wouldn't have a policy that says, here's all the things we can do with property. You have a policy that says, we will stay within the legal bounds that the statute requires. So when you get a request, before you'd ever see it, the executive team would be discussing, is this something a board can even do? And that's why you have not seen requests to give people a million dollars-
Sorry, Jesse.
-as a gift. We can't give gifts like that.
We do it through tax exemptions.
So, so in any event, my, my point is that we wouldn't specify by policy all the things you can do unless the board really wants to go that route, but it-
Okay.
That's a lot of work.
So if I'm not mistaken, and I'll say it again, under urban renewal rules, the different groups that react to it, the different people that react to it are weighted as far as their influence. Is that true, Paul?
Say it again, please.
The different groups are weighted as far as what their judgment will mean. So if they ask for $800,000, that $800,000 is voted on as to how much influence we have on that project or should have.
So I think we really need to wrap up because we're out of time and they need to clear the room. We can talk about it more when we're actually dealing with one or offline. So we have a list of potential work sessions up there and what I recommend, and you guys tell me if you like the idea or not, is we do the retreat idea to discuss our BSLs, results and ELS. And for remaining things where we want to have some work sessions, if the district could send the remaining items out to us and people could rank or somehow indicate the most important things and add a few more things if you have one and they can see which are the most important to the group as a whole. Be sure not to do a reply all because we don't want to start a meeting over email. Would that work for everybody? Then we all get our voices heard on what we want to do?
And I have things that from your discussions, I'll add to the list. So equity training, equity policy, that sort of stuff, I'll add to the list for you.
So we are going to take a short break, reconvene our meeting with a short business session at 7:00 PM. Again, all board members are present except for Director Glassy. And we are going to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There shouldn't be any agenda modifications, but I guess I'll ask for one anyway. Are there any agenda modifications? Seeing none. It's now time for our public comments. Okay, so let's see, it's a little different tonight. So when you come to the podium, please state your name, city of residence and the agenda item. Of course, there's only one tonight. Please remember each speaker has three minutes and the timer will beep when your time has expired. We want to hear from you, but please, we please ask that you respect our, the time of the, ah, let me start over. We want to hear from you, but we ask that you please respect the time limit and speak with courtesy and consideration of the board and the audience. Okay, so the first person on the list tonight is Rita Glass.
Good evening, Board and Chairperson Marty and Vice Chair Jesse and the board members. My name is Rita Glass and I reside in Salem, Oregon, and I come before you as the ESKP President. I am speaking on agenda item number five, the reaffirming of the Safe and Welcoming Schools Resolution. I applaud you and I am in full support of your reaffirming of this resolution and so I thank you for your continued commitment to that. And I look forward to the day where we no longer have to proclaim it every year, but that it becomes a part of who we are and embedded in just what we do 24/7 as a school district. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. Next, we have Mariano Orta.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mariano Orta, vivo en Salem. Estimados miembros de la junta, me brinque eso, perdón. Sí, estimados miembros de la junta del distrito escolar de Salem Kaiser, mi nombre es Mariano Orta y vivo en Salem. Tengo dos niños que van a la escuela German. Nuestra comunidad tiene casi 50,000 latinos, algunos son inmigrantes y otros son segunda y tercera generación. Hay 17,000 de ellos en las escuelas de kinder al 12º grado y varios miles más desde el nacimiento hasta el preescolar. Más del 90% de todos los estudiantes latinos en nuestro distrito son ciudadanos o residentes legales permanentes, pero esto no los protege. Por favor, piensen en esta comunidad cuando ustedes consideren en adoptar la resolución de escuelas seguras y acogedoras.
Go ahead.
We're just reading it in sections. So he said, my name is Mariano Orta and he has two children in Hammond, right? Our, our community has almost 50,000 Latinos. Some are immigrants and others are second and third generation. There are 17,000 students in the K-12 schools and several thousand more from birth to preschool. More than 90% of all Latino students in our district are citizens or permanent legal residents, but this does not protect them. Please think about this community when you are considering the adoption of the resolution for safe and welcoming schools. Go ahead.
Solicitamos que nuestra junta escolar trabaje con el distrito y nuestros padres y madres líderes de Salem Kaiser y también con otros padres y expertos externos para crear una política de protección inclusiva con prácticas sólidas alineadas con el lente de cuidado. Necesitamos aumentar la protección de todos nuestros niños, especialmente los estudiantes de color, los estudiantes latinos, inmigrantes y refugiados y sus padres y madres contra el acoso escolar, cualquier tipo de intimidación, incluidos los voluntarios y empleados del distrito.
We request that our school board work with the district and our S K C leader parents as well as other parents and external experts to create an inclusive protection policy with strong practices aligned with the equity lens. We need to increase the protection of all our children, especially students of color, Latino students, immigrants and refugees and their parents against bullying, any type of bullying, including from volunteers and district employees.
También queremos ver más apoyo para los niños y jóvenes que se portan mal, incluidos los acosadores. Hemos oído hablar de un nuevo programa que está siendo llamado PBIS, pero no sabemos si funciona y no sabemos en cuántas escuelas está. Nos complace que haya aprobado la recomendación pública de, del director de la junta escolar, el doctor Satya Chandragiri. Creará un grupo de trabajo de la junta escolar sobre asunto de salud mental porque esto también está relacionado con el comportamiento. Gracias.
Thanks. We also want to see more support for children and young people who misbehave, including bullies. We have heard of a new program that is doing, that the school is doing called PBIS, but we do not know if it works nor, and we do not know how many schools it is in. We are pleased that you have approved the public recommendation of the school board director, Dr. Satya Chandragiri. Will create a working group of the school mental, board on mental health issues because this is also related to behavior. Thank you.
Thanks.
In this case, the English translation isn't perfect instead of the Spanish.
Thank you very much. We have a copy of that for you. Wait, I've got more copies. And next is Yadira, I'm going to say it wrong and I know I've heard the correct way to say it before, so I'm sorry. Yadira Juárez, and you can tell me how to say it correctly. Please tell me how to say it correctly.
It's okay. Good evening, members of the board of the Salem Kaiser School District. My name is Yadira Juárez. I have two children who attend Salem Kaiser Schools. I live in northeast area. I want to share this story and the name of the family that feels, feels afraid to speak in public. This is a family of four children, dad and mom. My husband and I work full-time in the field. When my younger son was only five years old, three years ago, my husband and I, we took the hard and difficult decision to talk to him about, about deportation, how possible is the five-year-old can understand and what it means deportation. We talked to him and let him know what if dad or mommy get arrested and deported? He will have to stay with his brothers and a family that we know. It broke my heart to have to explain in details the process of deportation at this young age and watch him cry and say, no, mommy, I don't want anyone to take you and my daddy. I love you. You are the best mom. There are days when my son asks me, mommy, I will see you today after school? Tonight, I feel more safe to have someone who can talk and say this story about my life. And that is not only mine, there is a lot of members in the community. And that is not only mine, there is a lot of members in the community that they have afraid to speak up. And now, I'm just going to feel more secure with this resolution and my kids and my family that will feel safe at school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Lucia Sanchez Calabro. Sorry about that.
Buenas tardes, estimados miembros de la junta directiva del Distrito Escolar de Salem Kaiser. Mi nombre es Lucia Sanchez y vivo en el noreste de Salem, Oregon, y tengo dos niños en el Distrito Escolar. Esta es la razón por la que ustedes necesitan adoptar esta resolución. Hace aproximadamente un año y medio, uno de mis niños me comentó que uno de sus compañeros de clase, que es blanco, siempre le decía palabras degradantes. "Como eres un ilegal, eres un mojado, no tienes nada que hacer aquí, no tienes un padre. ¿Qué haces aquí? Vete." Y tan solo por el hecho de que somos de color? Esto es doloroso escucharlo, pero vivirlo es mucho más. Y causa mucha impotencia. Cuando él me contó, a veces no quería ir a la escuela, diciéndome que le dolía el estómago o la cabeza. Ya tenía tiempo pasando esto. Y yo le pregunté que si había hablado con alguno de sus maestros. Mi hijo me dijo que su compañero le advirtió que si iba y le decía a uno de sus maestros, no iba a conseguir nada, porque los maestros no le iban a escuchar nada, y que además ellos tampoco quieren ilegales. Mi hijo dijo, "No le quise decir nada, porque todos mis maestros son blancos." Y también creo que mi compañero tiene razón, no me van a escuchar.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Lucia Sanchez, and I live in northeast Salem. I have two children in our local schools. This is the reason why you need to adopt this resolution. Approximately one year and a half ago, one of my children told me that one of his classmates, who is white, always said degrading words like, "You are illegal, you're a wetback, and you don't have anything to do here. You don't have a father. What are you doing here? Get out." And only for the fact that we are people of color? This is very hurtful to hear, but it's more hurtful to live it and causes a lot of impotence. When my son told me that he did not want to go to school because he had a stomach ache and a headache, these incidents were happening already for a long time. I asked him if he had talked to his teacher. He told me that his classmate told him that if he would go to the teacher, he was not going to listen to him, because the teacher did not like the illegals either. My son said, "I did not wanted to say anything to the teachers, because they are white too, and because I believe that my classmate was right."
Esta vez mi hijo tuvo confianza de decirme, pero ¿qué pasa con los casos que los niños por miedo o por no ser escuchados lo siguen abusando de esta forma?
This time, my son was trusted enough to tell me about it. But what happened in the cases where the children, because they are fearful of not being listened to, allowed these abuses to continue.
Por favor, en nombre de nuestros niños, es tiempo de que ya se ponga un alto a estos abusos y a estos descuidos del personal de la escuela.
Please, in the name of our children, it is time that you put a stop to all these abuses and this, I don't know what that were, it would be this neglect of the personnel of the schools.
Y restandole importancia solo porque somos de color, nosotros también sentimos como los demás.
And to minimize the importance, because we are people of color, we too feel like everybody else.
Y nuestros hijos también son personas, y no es justo que vayan temerosos de llegar al lugar donde se supone que es su segundo hogar, donde pasan de siete a ocho horas.
And our children are people too, and it is not fair that they are always fearful to get to a school where they're supposed to be in their second home, where they spend seven to eight hours every day.
Por favor, yo pido más vigilancia en los pasillos de la escuela, durante el cambio de las clases, a la hora de lonche, y durante la hora de salida.
Please, I ask that you put more vigilance in the hallways of the schools and during the class exchange, lunchtime, and during the time when they're leaving the schools.
Porque a mí me ha tocado estar en estos momentos y me ha tocado ver muchas cosas que se pueden evitar, y cuando se les comenta el personal de la escuela, solo dicen, "Yo no vi nada," o "No creo que..." No creen nada cuando se les dice.
Because many of these things I had witnessed themselves, I have witnessed them myself, and many of these things could be avoided. But when I make the comments to the personnel of the schools, they say that they didn't see anything and/or don't believe what people say.
¿Dónde está el personal de la escuela? Cuando hay pleitos o abusos entre los estudiantes, necesitamos estrategias inteligentes, más inteligentes, para ayudar realmente a la seguridad de nuestros estudiantes.
Where is the school personnel when there are fights or abuses between students? We need better strategies, more smarter strategies, to really help with the security of all our students.
Thank you, Lucia. Eduardo, we've had six... We gave you six minutes.
The last sentence, please.
Last sentence, okay. Go ahead.
Please. En sus manos está la decisión para que nuestros niños tengan su segundo hogar seguro. ¿Por qué tenemos que esperar que siga esta epidemia de abusos si queremos que nuestros niños sean parte del cambio de nuestro país? Gracias.
It is in your hands, the decision, it is in your hands that our children feel secure in their second home. Why do we have to wait that this epidemic of abuses continue if we want all our childrens to be part of the change in our country?
Thank you for sharing, and I'm very sorry about your son's experiences. Okay, next, we have Ann Olivia Palazzo Angulo. And you'll teach me if I said it wrong, right?
Oh, yeah, well, it's Italian, and Palazzo Angulo.
Well, you'll have to work with me on that for a little bit, sorry.
It's like pizza. So, I, you know, hello, good evening, chair and members of the board. My name is Ann Olivia Palazzo Angulo, and I live at 364431st Avenue Northeast, Salem, 97301. My youngest daughter just graduated from North Salem High School this past June, so it's great. I too have a story for you. Keep in mind that the stories you heard tonight, and still will hear a few more, are just a sampling of what we hear in the community. But two weeks ago, a friend and colleague of mine, a program organizer of a statewide organization for women's leadership, came to me for help. She's a Latina woman, a citizen who's fully bilingual and has post-secondary education. She has children in the district, and she was shopping at an unnamed store in North Salem. She was on the phone with a family member and was speaking in Spanish. An employee came up to her and said, "English, English, English." My friend said, "You have no authority and no reason to say that to me." The reply was, "Well, if you insist on speaking Spanish, then why don't you go back to Mexico?" My friend stated, "How do you know what country I'm from?" Obviously, these remarks are coming from an ignorant place and are very racist comments. "You need to move away from me and let me shop." However, the woman followed her down the aisle and got very close to her shoulder in her personal space and bumped into her, which startled her, my friend. And by this time, my friend started shaking. She told the employee loudly to move away from her and stop following her. Then she went to the clerk, who was Latina, and understood exactly what she was experiencing. The manager wasn't in at the time, so the Latina employee promised to relate the incident to the manager the next day. My friend decided to write everything down, and then she left the store. I'm sure you all sympathize with my friend, but most of you may not be able to empathize if you have not experienced similar situations. But it might be hard to imagine for you what happened next. The aftermath of this is the important part of the story. My friend went home shaking and crying. She didn't sleep much for three nights with anxiety. She had nightmares. She cried. She struggled to go to work. She struggled to interact with her children, and she did not know what to tell them. Fortunately, she had a very supportive husband and other family members. It was three days before she came and told me in my office, and it was the first time that she had been able to tell the story without breaking down. Unless you get the wrong impression, my friend is a cheerful, stable mom, Latina leader, not prone to emotionalism, nor is she a stereotypical angry advocate or activist. She's a positive leader working for a statewide organization, helping women of all ethnicities, races, and backgrounds to become leaders through mentorship, and it's a specific structured program. So, try to put yourself in her shoes. That's what I'm asking you. And do you want to read the whole thing in Spanish? Yadira Eduardo, do we have anybody that doesn't understand English? Do you want to read it in Spanish? See? No, it's okay. Okay. So...
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Last, we have Alma Campos.
Buenas tardes, estimados miembros de la junta del Distrito Escolar de Salem Kaiser. Mi nombre es Alma Campos, y tengo a mis niños en la escuela César Chávez en Salem. Quiero hablar de la necesidad de esta resolución de las escuelas seguras y acogedoras y la importancia que sus aprobaciones de esta tienen para todos nuestros niños, jóvenes, y sus familias latinas en este momento tan agobante. Para todos nuestros, nosotros de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser, apreciamos las palabras más fuertes en esta resolución y padres de nuestros hijos. Oh, apologize, I have allergies now in my eyes.
Está bien. Porque...
Okay. En este tiempo está lleno de miedos en nuestras familias latinas, inmigrantes, o no, los estudiantes que tienen perjuicio o racismo o otra razón para intimidar sus compañeros de clase, incluyendo los voluntarios empleados del distrito. Todos los niños y jóvenes y sus familias latinos están en riesgo de ser acosados, insultados, intimidados. No importando si somos o no somos ciudadanos, nuestros niños llegan a casa con historias de intimidación que sucede en la escuela y en la comunidad.
So, I'll say that first paragraph, okay? So, she said she has two children in...
Chávez.
Chávez, yes. So, Alma... I forgot your last name.
Campos.
Campos, right. Okay, I want to talk about the need for this resolution of safe and welcoming schools and the importance that its approval has for all our Latino children, youth, and families in this moment, so overwhelming for all of us. We are at the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. We appreciate the strong words in this resolution, because the environment at this time is so full of fear and for our Latino families, immigrants or not, fathers, mothers, children, your students, against bullying and any type of bullying from students who have bias or racism or other reasons to bully their classmates, including volunteers and district employees. All Latino children and youth and their families are at risk of being harassed, insulted, intimidated, regardless of whether or not we are citizens. Our children come home with stories of bullying that happens in school and in the community. Also, we... Oops, that's right. Your turn.
Escuchamos diariamente los jóvenes nacionales de intimidación verbal y físico, tiroteos, redadas, familias separadas, y sus hijos encerrados en jaulas. Los estudiantes latinos tienen ansiedad constante, miedo y terror diariamente. Cuando salen de sus casas, esto afecta su salud mental, lo que afecta su preparación para la escuela, su rendimiento académico, en su comportamiento. Como padres y madres y jóvenes o niños, somos acosados, insultados, e intimidados en la comunidad también. Es importante que tenemos un espacio de seguridad y sentirnos aceptados en las escuelas.
We listen daily to the national events of verbal and physical intimidation, shootings, raids, separated families and their children locked in cages. Latino students have constant anxiety, fear, and terror daily when they leave their homes. This affects their mental health, which affects their school readiness, academic performance, behavior, and as fathers and mothers, youth or children, we are harassed, insulted, and intimidated in the community as well. And it's important that we have a safe space and feel accepted in the schools.
Esta situación hace que sea muy difícil para los líderes de la coalición para igualdad trabajar juntos para combatir el ausentismo crónico, el abandono escolar, y la graduación. Es por eso que necesitamos esta resolución para empezar el año escolar, para ayudar a nuestros padres y madres de familias y nuestros niños, y también a sentirse seguros en las escuelas. Muchas gracias.
The situation makes it very difficult for the coalition leaders, coalition, the Coalition for Equality leaders, to work together to combat chronic absenteeism, dropping out of school and graduation. That's why we need this resolution to start the school year, to help our parents and children feel safe in the schools.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Nope, we're done, and now we're going to move on to the action item.
Could I say one thing? I forgot to leave, I forgot to say. I really appreciate the added parts about training the staff and really, I don't know, it just sounds very intentional and very thorough on the resolution, so thank you very much.
We're going to move on to the action item, which is the resolution. I'm going to read the resolution in English. Olga's going to read it in Spanish, and then we'll have a motion on it after I get a drink of water. Do you want me to do the whole thing first, or do you want to go back and forth, whichever you'd like? Okay. So, Resolution Number 201920-1, Safe and Welcoming Schools. So Resolution Number 201920-1, Safe and Welcoming Schools. Whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools is committed to providing safe and welcoming spaces where all students are able to focus on their education, secure in the knowledge that the district will support their safety and well-being, while also providing access and opportunity to high-quality education. And whereas, this commitment means that student success will not be predicted nor predetermined by race, national origin, ability, economic circumstance, mobility, native language, sexual orientation, immigration status, gender identity, or level of proficiency upon entering school. And, gotta get a little air. Whereas, the school board is committed to protecting students' constitutional rights, including their Fourth Amendment right to be free from unreasonable searches and seizures, and to access a free public education. And whereas, the school board believes that federal immigration law enforcement activities at our schools, on our transportation routes, on our district property, or during school activities, will significantly interfere with our ability to provide safe and welcoming spaces and interfere with our students' rights. And whereas, the school board does not tolerate any form of discrimination, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, cyberbullying, or menacing of students. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Salem School Board expects the district shall do everything in its lawful power to protect our students' confidential information and ensure that our students' learning environments are not disrupted by immigration enforcement actions, including, but not limited to, the following. The district will continue its practice to not collect or maintain any information about our students' immigration status. Any requests by federal immigration officials for A, entry into any district school or other district property; B, to communicate with any student while that student is under the supervision of the district during any school activity or while using district transportation; or C, for the information, for any information about our students, shall immediately be forwarded to the district's legal counsel. In responding to such requests, the district's legal counsel will not share information or provide access to our students unless required by law. And we will direct, we will direct the district to protect the constitutional and legal rights of our students. For example, the district's legal counsel will not grant access to our students unless presented with a valid arrest warrant issued by a federal or state judge or magistrate. Be it further resolved that the district shall provide training and additional resources if needed for existing crisis and emergency response teams in order to help ensure the safety and well-being of our students who may be impacted by immigration enforcement actions. And be it further resolved, all Salem Kaiser Public School staff are diligent in recognizing and addressing discrimination, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, cyberbullying, or menacing as per Administrative Policy Instruction A003. Staff are informed of and follow the Administrative Policy Instruction A035 related to dealing with non-local law enforcement, including immigration officials who enter any district property and the administrative policy and procedure related to the handling of complaints as administrative ADOS and P008. And all Salem Kaiser staff maintain an organizational culture that treats students and their families with respect, dignity, and courtesy. And the superintendent maintains, develops, communicates, and implements administrative policies and procedures that foster a culture that is safe, inclusive, welcoming, and celebrates the diversity found within our community. And the superintendent takes appropriate action to prevent and/or correct conditions, procedures, actions, or decisions that are unlawful, unethical, unsafe, disrespectful, disruptive, undignified, or in violation of board or administrative policy. And be it further resolved that the Board of Directors will review, revise if appropriate, and reaffirm this resolution annul.
Vamos a leerla en español. Resolución número 201920, raya 1, Escuelas Seguras y Acogedoras. Considerando que las escuelas públicas de Salem Kaiser se comprometen a proporcionar un entorno seguro con espacios acogedores en el que todos los estudiantes sean capaces de enfocarse en su educación y cuenten con la certeza de que el distrito apoyará su seguridad y su bienestar al mismo tiempo que les proporcionará oportunidades de acceso a una educación de alta calidad. Además, considerando que dicho compromiso significa que el éxito estudiantil no será anticipado ni predeterminado por la raza, el país de origen, las habilidades, las circunstancias económicas, la movilidad física, el idioma nativo, la orientación sexual, el estatus migratorio, la identidad de género, o el nivel de competencia al ingresar a la escuela. Además, considerando que la Mesa Directiva Escolar se compromete a proteger los derechos constitucionales de los estudiantes, incluido el derecho de la Cuarta Enmienda de ser protegido contra las pesquisas y aprensiones arbitrarias, y por derecho al acceso a una educación pública gratuita. Además, considerando que la Mesa Directiva Escolar cree que las acciones federales de aplicación de la Ley de Inmigración en nuestras escuelas, en nuestras rutas de transporte, o durante las actividades escolares interferirían significativamente con nuestra habilidad para proporcionar a los estudiantes entornos seguros y acogedores e interfieren con los derechos de nuestros estudiantes. Además, considerando que la Mesa Directiva no tolera ningún tipo de discriminación, denotadas, de acuso, de intimidación, de hostigamiento, de hostigamiento cibernético, o de amenazas a los estudiantes. Hoy, por lo tanto, se determina que la Mesa Directiva Escolar espera que el distrito escolar lleve a cabo todo lo que esté dentro de su poder legal para resguardar la información confidencial de nuestros estudiantes y garantizar que el entorno de aprendizaje no sea interrumpido por las acciones de la aplicación de la Ley de Inmigración, incluidas, entre otras, las siguientes. El distrito escolar continuará con su práctica de no recopilar ni mantener ningún tipo de información sobre el estatus migratorio de nuestros estudiantes. Cualquier petición realizada por un funcionario federal de inmigración para ingresar a cualquier escuela del distrito u otra propiedad de este para comunicarse con cualquier estudiante mientras que el estudiante se encuentre bajo la supervisión del distrito durante cualquier actividad escolar, mientras utilice el transporte del distrito, o para obtener cualquier tipo de información sobre nuestros estudiantes, deberá ser dirigida de forma inmediata al asesor legal del distrito. Al responder a dicha solicitud, el asesor legal del distrito no compartirá información ni proporcionará acceso a los estudiantes a menos que así lo ordene la ley. Además, el asesor legal orientará al distrito para proteger los derechos legales y constitucionales de los estudiantes. Por ejemplo, el asesor legal del distrito negará que los agentes tengan a los estudiantes a menos de que sea presentada una orden de aprensión válida y expedida por un juez federal, estatal, o magistrado. Se acuerda a sí mismo que, de ser necesario, el distrito proporcionará la capacitación y los recursos adicionales para los equipos escolares de respuesta ante crisis y emergencias escolares con el fin de ayudar y garantizar la seguridad y el bienestar de nuestros estudiantes que pueden verse afectados por las acciones de la aplicación de la Ley de Inmigración. Además, se acuerda a sí mismo que todo el personal de las escuelas públicas de Salem Kaiser deberá ser diligente para detectar y afrontar los casos de discriminación, denotadas, de acuso, de intimidación, de hostigamiento, de hostigamiento cibernético, o de amenazas según la Norma Administrativa Orden A003. Del mismo modo, el personal será informado sobre dicho objetivo y aplicarán la Norma Administrativa Orden A035 en relación a los procesos de trámites con las fuerzas del orden público no locales, incluidos los agentes de inmigración que ingresen en la propiedad del distrito, y de la norma y los procedimientos relacionados con la gestión de reclamos, Normas Administrativas A005 y P008. Además, todo el personal de Salem Kaiser debe mantener una cultura institucional que propicia el trato respetuoso, digno, y cortés a todos los estudiantes y a sus familias. Además, la superintendente mantendrá, desarrollará, comunicará, y pondrá en práctica los procedimientos y las normas administrativas que fomenten una cultura institucional protectora, integradora, y acogedora que rinda homenaje a la diversidad cultural existente en nuestra comunidad. Además, la superintendente tomará las medidas adecuadas para prevenir o corregir las situaciones, procedimientos, acciones, o decisiones que sean ilícitas, carentes de ética, y respetuosas, disruptivas, indignas, o en violación al consejo o a las normas administrativas. Se acuerda a sí mismo que la Junta Directiva Escolar revisará y, en caso de ser necesario, corregirá y ratificará esta solución anualmente. Firmado por Mayra Hyen, presidente de la Junta Directiva Escolar.
We have a motion to accept the resolution.
I move that the Board accepts the Resolution Number 201920-1, Safe and Welcoming Schools.
Do a second.
Second.
Okay, so we have for a second. Any discussion? Jesse?
I just want to say that, just thank you guys for coming out to speak on it, just because I think those are very valid, very valid feelings and things that people are really going through. And so I just want to say thank you for sharing those stories with us, even though some of them are painful and some of them are. There's a cultural fear around immigration. And I hope and I think the Safe and Welcoming Schools Act, I think some of the changes are really good. And I think, and I hope that it brings more safety and security to our community. And so, thank you guys for coming, and I'm glad that we're passing this today.
Can I translate your message?
Oh, yes.
El director, Lipo, quería decirles que les quería agradecer muchísimo por haber venido y haber compartido sus mensajes, a pesar de que fueron mensajes algunos muy difíciles de leer, y que él cree que este movimiento nos va a ayudar a todos muchísimo y va a apoyar a los niños.
Madam Chair, thank you very much to the community to come and support. And this is an important resolution because it's really got multiple ramifications of children's health, wellness, and not only for children, but kind of down the road, what it will turn out to be for our community, relationship within the community, and the harmony within the community. And the issues of what has been pointed out today requires families, other children, teachers, and everybody who is a bystander and witnessing this to step up. So I hope that this resolution kind of helps guide our community and our school and family so that we can make it more inclusive, where parents and families and others feel safe to come up and be the bystanders. You know, so unless we have everybody becoming the upstander, such bullying and hazing and harassment will continue. So my hope is there is more participation, is more listening session and mutually, and we would like to listen, and we would like children to feel safe and the teachers to feel safe to speak up when things are going on, for this resolution to become a part of our culture. So thank you very much for reading this and explaining it in both languages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al director, quería decir que esta resolución es muy importante para los estudiantes, pero también para nuestra comunidad y para la armonía de nuestra comunidad. Espera que la resolución sea un mensaje para que las personas que están siendo testigos de las injusticias puedan ayudar, apoyar, y defender a los demás, y que la Junta Directiva está dispuesta a continuar escuchando para apoyar a los estudiantes.
Thank you, Olga. Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Oh, aye. I was aye with the forest, sorry. Okay, it passes unanimously. Next, we have readings of Valley Inquiry Charter School Contract Amendment. Christine?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring to the podium Principal Jesse Payne, Dr. Jesse Payne, from Valley Inquiry Charter School to present their request. This is a first reading, so now is your chance to kind of look at the request, ask questions. Paul Decopoulos has good background information on our charter contracts if we need any historical perspective. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. Thank you for your support and for kind of engaging in the mission of helping to educate our students. I'm Jesse Payne, I'm a resident of Salem, accompanied by Ken Slough. He's our Board Chair for the Charter School as well. So just some background, Valley Inquiry Charter School was, it's a world-authorized IB school in PYP, which is Primary Years Program. We were the first PYP IB world school in the Pacific Northwest. And what that means as an IB school, it's kind of one of almost 5,000 schools in over 150 countries around the world. And the whole concept behind being an IB school is the idea that you're kind of teaching the whole child from kind of just a multitude of experiences and really engaging them to be critical thinkers, to be autonomous, independent. And they do that through these IB attributes and through transdisciplinary units. So we follow a curriculum, we have accreditation through IB, we have visits that come out, and they kind of look to make sure that we're following their principles. Some of the IB attributes include being caring, open-minded, communicator, reflective, principled, risk-taker, knowledgeable, thinker, balanced, and to be an enquirer. And so we have a lot of fun engaging students at that level. And our goal as a staff is to reach all state standards. We take the same tests, we do the same assessments, we're held to the exact same standards as all other public schools. And what we do is we try to do it within the lens of transdisciplinary themes. So we look at who we are, we think of how we express ourselves, how we organize ourselves, where we are in place and time, how the world works, and sharing the planet. And those transdisciplinary themes guide instruction to allow students to kind of take charge. And then the teachers got to come alongside and map standards to it and make sure that everything is being met. So that's just a little background on IB and what our school is and our charter. Our current charter agreement allows for our charter to hire a total of four employees. And those are four enrichment teachers, that's music, Spanish, PE, and art. So what you're seeing before you is a charter amendment. We are not asking for additional funding, we are not asking for more students, we're not asking for that. We're asking for some autonomy in being able to hire more staff beyond those four employees. So our reasons for doing this is plenty. One of them is that we're actually, we're really hoping to diversify our population to be more inclusive, diverse, and reflective of the demographics of the Salem Kaiser community. And in order to do so, we need the capacity and the financial footing to ensure that we can hire staff and support staff. Think of counselor, behavioral support, instructional support on a scale that kind of matches similar like charter schools and small schools. We are an authorized PYP IB world school, and it requires unique positions. One of those is our IB coordinator position for the PYP program. That's the only position of its kind in the entire district. There's not another IB PYP coordinator. So recruiting for that position is notoriously difficult because it doesn't exist in the broader district. We require also... We require also a faculty of classroom teachers and support staff with a unique set of pedagogical skills and abilities that often call for a set of expectations, teaching strategies, and responsibilities that may differ from teachers and staff in traditional schools. Also, we want to be financially secure for the future. We are not in a fiscally negative or bad position, we're doing pretty well, but we want to make sure that we are on the cusp and on being proactive in our budget in the future. And we think of issues like what were to happen if we were evicted from our place. We would need to ensure that we have appropriate financial footing to be able to carry forward. We think of the next potential economic downturn, we need to make sure that we have appropriate financial footing. Some additional notes, the goal is to transition over time, we have no desire to terminate employment of current employees, we're not going to fire them or take them out of the school. We love our staff, they are aware of this, they're behind this as well. It's more about just setting up the future. We have one open position right now, it's our IB coordinator position. So this is why this is being brought forward right now. And this does not affect the principal, office manager, custodian position, or special lead, because those are better served as being district employees. We want to make sure that whoever's in my position as administrator or in the office manager position, that they are well-trained through district and know the district initiatives, office manager requirements, and all the protocols there. The precedent for charter schools hiring their own staff is already present, and this is supported by our PTC, our charter board, our teachers, and our staff. So, thank you very much.
So just to be transparent, my own son did attend for our part of second grade and third grade, but that will not affect anything I have to say or think about the school. Kathy?
I'd like to ask you, you're seeking to diversify the student population. Have you thought through how you might do this?
Yes.
We've had many other charter schools struggling with this.
Yes. I mean, obviously, there's some challenges that are present. One of the things we've done, I mean, just the hiring of me in this position, I am a person of Hispanic descent, I know I don't look it, but three of my four grandparents came here as illegal immigrants into this country. We have an office manager that we hired this last year that is fluent in Spanish. We have another hire coming in that's also a person of color. So we're trying to kind of make sure that our staff is also representative of the broader demographics of our community. We do send postcards to every single family in the entire district that has elementary-aged students. So we send a post, it's a big expense, but we send to everyone last year, my first year was last year there, and we sent that postcard in Spanish, we translated it to ensure that all Spanish-speaking families had access to the postcard. And it shows that we are a free school, we do not charge tuition, we are still a public school, and we received a lot of calls and inquiries about our school, you know, what can we do to get our student in? We are recruiting efforts this year, when we go into it, we're going to be translating that postcard to additional languages as well. And we're also going to be reaching out to the Head Start communities and local preschools to talk about who we are and the access that we have as well.
Are you able to then offer some means of transportation?
At this point, no. And I mean, to be honest with the funding, with where we're at and the constraints there, it's not even an option, but I would absolutely say that my board and we would be interested in trying to even pursue those kinds of options if funding was higher.
Paul?
What is your current demographic makeup?
It's primarily white, we don't have a large diverse population, I don't have the numbers, and I can get those forwarded to you.
Take a guess.
I can't take a guess, I'm sorry. But I can forward that information.
Please.
Any more questions? Satya?
Yes.
How long have you been operating this school? And if you were to track the children who come out of your school, what is the graduation rate that your students who go through your educational pipeline?
Okay. I don't have those numbers as well. Do you have when the school charter?
I think it was 14 or 15 years ago, based on my remembrance of when I first heard about it, at the Y where it was advertised.
You know, it's a very good program, don't get me wrong, it's a terrific way to kind of, you're like cutting edge, and ideally, everybody should be teaching the way you're teaching for preparing them for the future. So, I mean, if there is a way to scale it up, that's the way to go.
Yeah.
But having said that, those kind of things may be very attractive to parents who may be thinking of saying, okay, what is the reason I should respond to your postcard? And what's the value that the educational system will add? And how you can be as a small system, be flexible and adaptable to whatever the needs come as we move along? That's what I'm thinking, listening to you.
Awesome. Thank you, I appreciate that.
One more thing I wanted to say, just for those that may not know, Valley Inquiry used to be called Baker Charter, it actually started in Baker Elementary, then it moved to the Deaf School, that's where my son attended, and then it moved to its own building elsewhere. Danielle, did you have a question?
I do, I have two. So on page five of the amended contract that you're proposing, under licensure, it says "Teachers employed by the district to work at VICS shall be licensed to teach in Oregon and will maintain a current invalid license." So those that you're seeking to fill the non-district positions, are they also going to be licensed by the state of Oregon?
For which positions?
To teach.
Oh yeah, I mean, any teaching classroom positions will have to have a license, valid license for teaching, correct?
Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
And then we will bring this back in September for your action.
Now it's time for us to go into executive session. The board will meet in executive session under the following Oregon Robi statutes, ORS-192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations, and B, ORS-192.6602E to conduct deliberations with persons designated to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media are allowed to attend executive sessions except those sessions held in regard to expulsions. All other audience members are excluded from executive session and are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during executive sessions except to state the general subject of the session as listed on the agenda. No recording of executive sessions is allowed without express permission from the board.
Madam Chair, can I take about 30 seconds to recognize a student who has made an exceptional achievement? Would that be a place for me?
Well, we didn't do our normal activities, I wonder, should we sneak it in here real quick? Our board activity before, is that all right with everybody? Is there a problem with me doing that? It's not on the agenda.
All right. I want to go quickly, thank you very much, madam. I want to recognize Arjun Rajashakran, who is a student, a sophomore at Sprague High School, and his parents, you know, he's an exceptional kid, a student, who is one of the 98 students who were selected for a national tournament, sorry, for a training volleyball, USA volleyball training in Illinois, following which he's one of the three from Oregon who represented Northwest in playing at the national levels in Florida. So I just wanted to say, one of her kids have done a great job, and so thank you Superintendent Perry for having good kids in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, anything you would like to share before we go into executive session?
No, I'll save anything for the next time.
Okay. Jesse?
Danielle? I was going to, but maybe we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay. Paul? Me? Okay. All right, we're gonna go into executive session now then.
Are you thinking just a couple minutes while, for five minutes?
Yeah, five minutes.